We do want to focus now and move to the panelists because as Bill mentioned, we do have a great panel that's here today. And I'd like to have them reflect upon some of the things that just were talked about from the groups, but before that, I'll just do a brief introduction. We have Representative Tony Walker with us, who's Chair of Human Services and a representative from New Haven. I'll be brief with the introductions because I know we have limited time, but appreciate having Representative Walker here. We have Professor Tim Black here from the University of Hartford. He has a recent book out called "When a Heart Turns Rock Solid," 18-Year Ethnography about three Puerto Rican men from Springfield. It's a really interesting read, but he's also Director of the Center for Social Research at University of Hartford. And we have Ann Adelis Estrin, who everybody knows from the morning. So I'll move on to Senator Tony Harp from New Haven as well and co-chair of the Appropriations Committee. Next to her, we have Sue Quinlan, who's the Director of Families in Crisis out of Hartford, but that operates direct provision services all throughout the state. And we have Judge Barbara Quinn, who's the Chief Court Administrator in the state of Connecticut for the Judicial Branch. And then we have Dr. Pat Hines, who's actually an adjunct faculty here at CCSU, but in his day job, what he does is he's DOC, Director of Offenders Services?
Programs and Treatment.
Programs and Treatment. So without further ado, I'll just have Bill Dyson come up here and help me co-moderate. I figured as the day was going on, there's a lot to synthesize here, and he was sitting there taking much of it in, so I'm going to have him start off with the questioning.
Need this mic here? Thank you very much, Andrew. The reports were good ones, and I wouldn't question at all that there were good discussions that took place in each of the groups. And I was taking note of many of the recommendations that were being made, and there were a lot of similarities between the groups. And let me point out one that just jumped out at me, and that was information sharing, which seemed so small that information sharing would be significant here. So I'm curious as to what the panel would have to say about whether or not we can get something done about being able to share information, and what would stand in the way of being able to share that information. So I know it's something that I feel probably everyone on the panel wants to respond to, but I'll start with Judge Quinn, if that's okay, Judge Quinn.
All right, that's fine. I would say to you, there are a number of considerable legal impediments to sharing a good deal of this information. There are statutes that cover confidentiality of information about people. There are federal statutes about what can be shared. I know that we have had an initiative going on, on the juvenile side, for some period of time to think about how the agencies that work together, particularly DCF and Judicial and some of the providers, could do a little better in terms of that information sharing. It's been a many-year project, and we still are facing a lot of impediments. So while in many respects it seems simple, and certain obvious kinds of information can be shared in certain circumstances, there's a balancing to go through in terms of the statutory criteria about the individual's right to privacy about certain information and the various groups that need to know some of that. So I think it would be very helpful to have a group continue to work on that. I think there are areas that could be significantly improved, but it's not a simple answer.
Thank you very much, Judge Quinn. Let me go to Pat Hines. Pat, do you have any comments on the information sharing piece?
Sure. There's a couple of different types of information sharing problems that we've come across. One has to do with computer-based sharing of information, this whole issue of interoperability. And I know all of the agencies have been talking to one another and working on this, so the problem is well-recognized. As Judge Quinn says, on the surface at least, it seems pretty straightforward, just fix this, you know, but it's very complicated. The other type of information has to do with what Judge Quinn was talking about, which is focusing on issues of release information. Now, it's my understanding, the last time I talked to our Director of Health and Addiction Services, that there have been great strides made in this area, and that I think we're getting close to landing that plane, and it's been going on literally for years. So I think we're getting close to the point of doing that. The other type of information sharing that has to do with re-entry efforts is a whole other thing, and I'm not sure we are really talking about that, but it has to do with the fact that when people are incarcerated, certainly, we get together a huge amount of information. In fact, we provide more data to people in the community than information. And from my perspective, it's very important to think about the difference between information and data. Information means that you've got readily usable data to do your job. And so if I have, for example, we have a probation officer, a parole officer, a nonprofit organization, and they get a thick file this big, and you say, here's all this information, it's not really information, it's a bunch of data. So we have to work very hard, and we are working very hard in a number of projects, to try to figure out what is it that a parole officer needs, a nonprofit agency needs, a probation officer needs, to do their job in helping this person make a successful re-entry into the community. So again, that's an ongoing project, and I think we're making great strides.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on Judge Quinn's comment about continuing to look at the issue of information sharing and the comments that you've made, and you indicated that there are some discussions that have been taking place. So I have it now that two entities are engaged in looking at some information with an eye towards sharing information, but they might be moving along on separate tracks, which means that is there any likelihood that these items will come together to expedite how things are done, or is there something that the legislature can do to expedite that? And if you have any comments about what it is that we might be able to do to bring this to fruition?
It's a difficult question for me to answer because the families are very, very, very afraid of information sharing. And I'll give two quick examples. Amina, not her real name, is a 14-year-old girl whose father is incarcerated. She lives in New York City, and she has gone through school since kindergarten. No one knows that she has an incarcerated father. And she lives in a neighborhood where everybody's locked up, but she's not going to be one of those kids. She's not telling anybody. And when a program got set up in her school, her grandmother wanted her to do it and was going to tell the counselor, and the child had an absolute fit and went into a panic attack that required some mental health treatment, all because she did not want anybody to know that her parent, father, was incarcerated. So I think we have to be careful about who wants the information and for what purposes, and are the families involved in the decision? And even more important, are the children involved in the decision? Because families are sometimes going to make decisions for children that children would not make for themselves. Sometimes that's a good thing, and sometimes it isn't. So what's happening around the country now is that most of the discussions about information sharing are stalled at the very places that they're stalled right here. They're stalled because we haven't done a good enough job yet of figuring out why and for, you know, who's sharing what with whom and why, and who knows about it, and how are we going to get permission in ways that will not negatively impact the families? So it's one thing for, for instance, the Department of Corrections and the Department of Child Protective Services or Child Welfare or DCF to talk to each other so that we can provide coordinated services and understand when social workers need to bring children to the prison, et cetera. Entirely different question when mentoring programs in the community are asking either the Department of Corrections or the Department of Public Services to give information about incarcerated parents and their children to them because they want to match them up with mentors. Or let's not even talk about schools, because schools are not safe places for a lot of these families. A lot of the parents have not had good experiences with schools. And my last comment is, we are now doing district-wide trainings in a lot of school districts, and the first school district was Austin, Texas. When we did a quick little activity, which included a statement that said incarcerated parents should, and people fill in the blanks, one of the teachers in the school said incarcerated parents should be fed to the hungry in third-world countries. I say that because when schools and teachers and environments that are going to be there where the kids are living feel that way, they don't want their dirty laundry aired. And so schools may be a great place in some ways to start services, but not until we do a better job of training.
Thank you. Judge Quinn, did you want to respond? I saw you look back, so I'm just...
No, I do agree that the privacy needs that families have are really the thing that we need to pay a great deal of attention to, and to be certain that we don't create information-sharing systems that not only follow people around for many years to come, but actively create harm for them. So I do agree with the fact that we need to be very sure of why and to whom this information goes.
Thank you. Representative Walker?
Thank you, Bill. I think Dr. Hines hit on a very important point, though. Talking about information sharing or data, we have to start to collect data and information on the types of services that we're providing and looking at the way many of our agencies coordinate case management and services between them. It's got to be looked at. Should we set up the caregiver as the primary parent who handles the services? Should we incorporate the parent in the process while the child is being taken care of by the grandparent? Should the grandparent be the only one that's doing the services? I think in sharing the information, looking at what we're doing and how we coordinate those services should be the number-one first level of addressing data. Because I know there are many ways that case managers through our child welfare system work in a negative way, and I think we have to start to shift it back to making them understand the importance of the bond between the child and the parent, and that doesn't always get translated in much of the casework that happens. So as we share this information, we look at the most positive ways of addressing a coordination for a child who's traumatized right now and is separated from the bond that they already had started as an infant. So I hope that we don't eliminate the idea of information sharing, but I think we also need to look at information that helps us to design the programs that are coordinated between the different agencies in the silos.
Thank you. Now, let me follow up, and I'm going to come back to the information-sharing piece of it, because it seems to be a very sensitive issue, is complicated, yet many groups in this gathering saw a need for information sharing, yet the explanations that we've gotten saying that that's tricky ground to be stepping on. And I gather that maybe there's some desire to try and find a way to deal with it, but I think that requires further discussion. But if we go to improving visitation, now, is information sharing and improving visitation have any comparability at all, or can we get improved visitation services and be divorced of the information sharing? Senator Harp?
Thank you. I think that that also turned out to be a very complex question. One of the things that was brought to our attention by the Speaker this morning was the whole question of whether or not, one, there is visitation, but then if there is visitation, is it quality visitation? The importance of a child to be held and to be touched. And there are reasons, I understand, in the correction system for that not to occur that have to do with contraband being brought in and that sort of thing. And so one of the things that it appears to me that there needs to be some kind of thought given to the importance of the bond with the child and the needs of the criminal justice system or Department of Corrections around assuring that it's a safe visit. And I don't think that occurs. The other thing that we know because of staffing limitations, that when parents or grandparents can bring the children to visit, oftentimes there isn't a scheduled visit on holidays and weekends because there isn't adequate staff. I think those things need to be fixed if we're going to have better visitation programs.
Thank you very much for the response. Now, let me go to Mr. Black. You have written a book, an interesting book. Andrew has indicated that speaks very much to many of the issues that we've talked about here today, and I'm not sure if you were there this morning, but obviously you have a great deal of experience around the topic. So I'd be curious to what kind of thoughts you would have to say in relationship to the over-incarceration issue, disparity, or anything that you might find to be useful here.
Yeah. No, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend this morning, but clearly the over-incarceration issue came up again and again from the report backs. For me, this is one of the more important issues, one of the issues that I write a lot about. It seems to me that the hyper-incarceration, as I sometimes call it, that began in the 1970s, is related to a lot of other issues, and I'm sort of a big-picture guy, and I like to try to draw the connections between incarceration and other kinds of issues, such as, you know, our urban areas particularly, most of the report backs are from urban areas, suffered from what sometimes I call double retrenchment in the 80s and the 90s, and that is a retrenchment in income sources in these communities, largely a retrenchment in living wage jobs for lower-skilled workforce, and a retrenchment in welfare services. And the consequence of that, of course, is it left these communities with very few resources to draw on. And men in these communities and women in these communities are struggling in order to try to figure out how to make ends meet. You add to that. So we just take incarceration out of it altogether, just for a moment, and recognize the damage that we have done to these communities just over the last 30 years without incarceration. Okay, now add incarceration to the issue, which is that we have criminalized, of course, the drug economy, which is one of the more lucrative ways that communities get resources into these areas. And, you know, for better or for worse. I mean, there obviously are very negative consequences to that for communities as well. But we have criminalized the drug economy, which is one of those resource flows, and the consequence of that is we remove men, largely men, mostly men, from these communities for periods of time. We put them in institutions in which they have to deal mostly with boredom and tedium and occasional eruptions of brutal violence in the institutions. We do very little for them there. We provide them perhaps with some GED programs and other meager programs. I know Pat's going to have something to say about that. But, right? And then we return them to the communities. And so today, we have nearly 700,000 inmates returning to communities, mostly these fragile communities that I described in the beginning that have suffered the effects of double retrenchment, 700,000 returning to these communities unprepared to be reintegrated into civilian life, into communities in which it's almost impossible for them to be reintegrated into civilian life. My book is about my relationships with some of these guys, how they deal with this, what they do, what happens to them when they go inside prison, what happens to them when they return. So, you know, it seems to me that the struggle is bigger than just incarceration, right? The struggle is, how are we going to rebuild the communities that we have destroyed over the last 30 years? And incarceration has become a way of managing the lives of the most marginalized populations in our society, and it's not a very effective way, a way that has in fact destroyed not just the lives of the individuals who are marginalized or who have become, I would argue, economically obsolete in our new community. There's no place for them. Okay? Not only has it destroyed their lives, it's destroyed family lives, and it's destroyed communities. And I would like to make sure we expand this conversation to not just talk about what it does to families, but to talk about what happens when the most marginalized populations are concentrated in spatial, in urban areas, right? And the only strategy we have basically used in order to manage that is to remove them from the community and put them back in, less prepared to act in that community than before.
Thank you very much. Now, you take the comments just made by Professor Black, I know, I know, I'm with you, and what I'm doing is that I'm going to Ms. Quinlan. Now, recognizing what Professor Black just pointed out, all the ills that go with it, the work that you do, explain to this audience what it is that you're doing to try to make this better than what it is.
Well, first, I want to thank CCSU for making "Building Bridges 5" about children of incarcerated. I'm sure this is a terrible metaphor, but in some ways, I feel like I didn't even realize it until I got here today, I feel like I was invited to a party, and I'm sort of like about me. Because although we've been doing this work since 1979, and we've been in the community corrections world, it's really never been about families and children. It's always been more about offenders and, to a lesser degree, victims. But really, families and children were almost secondary and something we didn't give much thought to. And it hasn't really been, I think, until nationally, we've had to deal with some of the unintended consequences of mass incarceration, that this issue has come to the forefront. So, you know, it's very hopeful for me to spend a day like today and see so many people committed to their communities with a renewed interest, or maybe a new interest, in going back and thinking about families in a new and different way than you ever did before. So although after following Tim, it almost seems overwhelmingly difficult, I do feel hopeful. I would say that I see one of the benefits of incarceration as an opportunity for family preservation. For instance, what do I mean by that? You know, many fathers who go to prison may have marginal or minimal relationships with their children for a variety of reasons when they're there. Yet children will report that the time they had the best relationship with their parent is when their parent was in prison. So although that may seem at first blush unusual, but if you think about it, it's where we know particularly where fathers are, and children have the opportunity to begin to connect, and sort of going back to the three M's that Ann talked about, making, managing, and maintaining relationships. So if we know that, that's one of the things we can do, is take this unusual crossroad and try to create opportunities to bring families back together, to bring fathers back into families. Having read Tim's book, I know that many, and just through the work that we do, many, many men and women will say that their children are their primary motivator for changing their criminal behavior. Seeing the hurt that's caused to their children is something that they don't want to see repeat, and so they're very motivated to make real change in their lives. But motivation alone is not enough. We really need to have systems in place to be able to respond so that they can be successful when they return home to their communities and to their families.
Thank you. I'm still concerned somewhat about what is it that we can do to improve visitation? Because if the separation is there, then obviously the visitation becomes a critical piece. If there's something can be done to improve the visitation, what is it? And how do we go about improving that visitation? Pat, you want to take off on this? Okay.
Sure, with pleasure. I completely agree. This is an issue that we need to work on. We have been working on it, in fact, for a long time. The quality of visitation in most of our facilities now is dramatically better than it used to be. We have engaged in a number of programs that specifically are geared around ending up with kids and other family members coming in and spending real quality time. So we've been linking these things. Many of the fathers, I'll talk about the fathers, but it's not just the fathers, the mothers also, in fact, are very skill deficient about parenting. Some of them have had very, very poor relationships with their kids. And so many of our programs, we have a number of programs that are designed to really talk about parenting. Sometimes the parenting that results because of those programs is really the first effect of parenting that they've ever been involved with, and they talk to us about that. And it ends up with having kids come in and doing all sorts of things. So we have, you know, sending videos home, reading to the kids on the videos, coming in, having fathers spending quality time, drawing things, and doing all sorts of stuff as a family, gathering at a table like we have here, the whole family together. Now, we can't always do that, and the reality is that most of our visits happen just like they've happened. We've tried to improve the quality of the visiting rooms, we've added visiting boards where people can get information. Every single place you go, you will find a family and friends handbook. One of the things I decided when I was sitting in a meeting earlier today and just listening to this is that I will work with Andrew and the staff to convene a meeting to get some people, not only from our facilities, but some of the nonprofits, and also some people are actually visiting their families and talk about this more. We are working on, you know, video approaches, and so there's been a lot of positive things going on. But I don't want any of that to sound defensive, because I'm convinced after listening today, there's a lot more that we can do, there's a lot more that we should do, and I hope when we have the next Building Bridges meeting here, that you'll put us and whoever's working on this on the agenda, and we'll gladly report out. I can guarantee you that we will tell you about improvement. So it's a very, very important area. I completely agree.
Thank you. Now, let me go to Senator Harp quickly here about resources. Now, we have talked about the information sharing piece, improving the visitation, the issue of over-incarceration, disparity, and one I haven't brought up yet, which is the research and data piece that's been brought up, as well as child support enforcement. So at the bottom of all of it resides this issue of resources. Now, for all of us who are fully aware of what goes on in the state today and the condition that we're in, so there's a need to deal with that issue. So I'm putting it to Senator Harp, would she want to comment on how do we get there on dealing with that issue? If we could reduce the population in our prison, that we assume would free up some resources. Now, the question becomes, is there an opportunity by which those resources could be funnelled back into dealing with the issues that we've just talked about here? Senator Harp?
Thank you very much. Yeah, one of the things that I think that we have to look at is, what are we doing now and is it working? Who's better off because we're doing it? And so I think that, and we've had a number of proposals over the past couple of years that the governor hasn't necessarily embraced, but I think it's very important that we look at something that sort of looks like good times, so that people can earn their way out of prisons, and we can ultimately reduce the number of people in our prisons. Because once you do that, then you will have resources that you can reallocate and make improvements. I actually have asked a number of people, we have a number of folks just sort of cooling their heels in jail who are not violent offenders, haven't really committed a crime against a person, and at some point, we need to say, I think taxpayers need to say, do you really want to spend your money there? Or do you want to spend your money somewhere else where you're helping to build jobs and opportunities for folks? But I have a group of people looking at those various reasons people are incarcerated on the legislative research side, as well as on the Office of Fiscal Analysis side, to say, is there a way to think about crimes that are moneyed crimes, for example, and require a moneyed result? In other words, it's an infraction. If you steal money, then you pay money back.
If you steal money, then you pay money back. A lot of times, what we see happen is that we, we, there's been fraud, people have stolen money, we put them in jail, they can't pay the money back, we give them big fines, they can't do any of that back. So maybe we need to think about those folks in a different way, and use the resources that they pay back to help build some of these programs, and use their empty beds as a way to close some of our facilities, and use those dollars again for the families that actually need them. So we are working on it, it's not that easy. You know, we're a tough on-crime state, and you know, the question that we really need to ask ourselves, are we any safer? Are we any better off? And I think the answer is no. But psychologically, we believe for some reason that we need to do this.
Thank you very much. Now, I know the audience wanted to get in on this and ask them questions, so unless they have a question they wanted to respond to, members of the audiences. Now, the questions that we would have come from the audience. Do not feel bashful here. Judge Quinn would love to have a question from somebody. Yes. Go right ahead, Senator, Representative Walker.
I just want to say a couple of things. I want to go back to your idea of how do we improve our visitations. And I think it's something that we should look at with our Department of Corrections. A lot of times, visitations for parents and families has been used as a tool of manipulation and control. And I think one of the things is we take that out of the equation and make it something that is automatic, because it does help in the preservation of improving the quality that the inmate has in incarceration. And the other is to establish a visitation process, so that every inmate has the opportunity, if they know that they have families, that they have an established visitation at least once a month, that is understood and expected in the process. And to go on to what Senator Hopp was talking about, we have an increased number of people released from prison of 23% over the last year. We were reported out, and Mr. Dyson, Representative Dyson, I should say, you were very instrumental in helping us create some of the crime bill reform that we did. And because of that, we have now increased the number of people being released. The problem is, with the increased number of being released, we don't have the increased number of services out there. And the process is just going to go back to more people being incarcerated. We are at a bad point right now because of the economic times, as Senator Hopp said. We're trying to get the best services out there, but we have, we've done this major shift. A year and a half ago, we had everybody and the number of people being incarcerated kept in prison escalating way beyond the numbers. Now, we're going the opposite direction, and we're sending people out faster and faster because we want to downsize our prisons, not because we think prisons are bad, but because we're trying to cut costs. So I think we have to balance that out and look a little further into what are we going to do and how are we going to make sure. I think in a consumer survey, probably, I mean, people think that's crazy, but asking people who are being released, what services have worked honestly for them? What services are going to be the best ones? And then we start to use those as a way of evaluating and funding the programs that we have out there. Because we've heard from a lot of people who are ex-offenders, and they have told us about a lot of programs that we have continually funded for years and years that have not been effective. So I think we need to start to look at them.
Thank you very much. Pat, and while Pat is getting ready to speak, I'm still waiting on the question for Judge Quinn. Just kidding, just kidding. All right, Pat, go first.
Bye. I'd be okay with that.
Let me just respond to a few things Representative Walker was talking about. We have actually just gone through a massive review of virtually all of our programs. Nonprofit organizations understand that, and that was guided entirely by the exact question that the representative rightly was addressing. Namely, are we really providing the kinds of services that are going to help people make it out there in the community? And so as a result of that, one result of that I can use as an example now, that we have a whole bunch of services that are now being provided regarding family reunification. We never had those services before, not like we have now, that is. So we've made tremendous change in the type and level and quality of the programs we're delivering. In addition to that, we've increased, increased quite a bit the amount of supervision that people have in the community. And it's not just supervision. Research is very clear about that, just raising, adding up the level of supervision, for example, creating intensive parole supervision in and of itself typically does nothing more than increase the amount of violations of discretionary release. In fact, if it's done properly, and I think we are doing it properly, the result is very different, where you have a dramatic decrease in the amount of violent convictions. I think one of the things that we, and I say we, I'm not talking about the Department of Corrections, I'm talking about the whole criminal justice system, has to do a much better job of, is to address what I think is an underlying question that the representative was addressing, and I heard that same question addressed to our acting commissioner recently at the LOB, which is that, is this the right thing to do, really? So, and across the state, people have asked me many times, Dr. Heinz, isn't it the case that people on discretionary release commit crimes sometimes? Yes, that's true. Isn't it always been the case? Yes, that's true. Wouldn't it always be the case? Yes, that's true. Then why do we do it? I don't understand that. Now, I personally think that's a really good question that we need to address, and I don't think we've all, as a system, adequately addressed that. And the answer is this, that if we properly assess people, and we provide the proper programming pre-release, and we provide proper programming in follow-up with a balanced level of supervision, the overall level of crimes that would be committed, that group, would be substantially lower than a group not released. But we have, have to do a better job of explaining to that to the public. So as far as I'm concerned, the issue isn't about reducing the population. I don't think it has to be a dichotomous question. Are we going to reduce population or have safety? I think we can do it both ways. It's not that simple, and we have to do a lot of work to make sure we're doing it the right way, but it can be done, and we have a lot of research evidence to say that we can do it.
Thank you very much. And we have a question here for, your question is for whom?
Any and all.
Go right ahead, sir.
I guess especially for Senator Hopp and Representative Walker, but kind of for everyone. I guess for most of us, we work, or we live, or both work and live in communities that are really affected by over incarceration. And so for us, the effects on children who have their parents incarcerated are really obvious. We don't need to be persuaded of the emotional effects and whatnot. But one of the things that came up in the Bridgeport group is that a lot of parts of the state don't really see that, and they don't really see this as a priority. And if they do, they say, well, why are we giving these resources to folks who are, you know, to folks who are locked up, to folks who did a crime? And I wonder, especially, I direct it to the representatives who, although they're from New Haven, deal with representatives and senators from other parts of the state, how do we make people understand that this issue is not fundamentally an issue about services for people who are incarcerated, it's fundamentally an issue of services for children?
Well, you know, I think that you have basically said it. You know, one of the things that is clear to me is that if we don't have these services, both for, for the families, because you really want to, you know, when I first became elected, I was elected on the local level, and one of the things that, we were all very concerned about the drug dealing that was going on in my neighborhood. And one of the things, and you know, these people were getting arrested, and, and one of the things that the people in the neighborhood said to me, but they come back and they come back worse, and their families are more dysfunctional. Well, it's costing us more money. And I think that if you can, if we can begin to talk about the child, and we can begin to talk about the wasted resources that we already put in the system that can be better utilized by doing things differently and have better results, then I think that's the way that we talk about it, in much the same way that you did. You know, the people who don't live in my district, or in Bridgeport, or in Waterbury, or in some of these places that have high numbers, don't like paying for it. Well, then let's have a better system that isn't as chaotic and is more family-friendly, and actually allows for people to be contributing members of our communities.
Representative Walker?
I agree with you. We have this discussion day in and day out up at the Capitol, trying to get everybody to understand that this is one state, it's not 169 towns. And it's very difficult. But when we start talking about it in dollars and cents, they start to listen a little differently. In fact, when we started talking about raise the age and the juvenile justice system, we had to figure out how to move the envelope, because it had been stuck there for so long, and people kept saying, well, we're going to do it, we're going to do it. We had to bring out the dollars and sense that the whole state was having to pay. And the benefit of a child being successful versus a child failing had to be used and shared with everybody on a statewide basis. If we take those resources that we talk about and put them in positive things, we have a longer and a better effect. They become part of our organization and our communities, as opposed to being dependent upon them. And we have to do this all the time. People have short memories, people come in, people go out. So it's one of those things where it's got to be addressed every year, year after year, the benefits of improving families as opposed to incarcerating them.
Thank you, thank you very much for that response. Are there any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir, come right on. You got, come on. Thank you.
This question's for anyone who wants to answer it. So my work in the community started off with working the prison system, going to Osborne and McDougal and doing some counseling and getting individuals who are ready to be out of the prison to come back in the community of Hartford. And one of the things that I found was that outside of getting individuals to reconnect with family, housing, labor, all those were critical issues, and treatment was as well. But after working with individuals for, I would say, the last 10 years, children as well as adults, one of the things that I'm sort of dealing with is this notion, can we really program our way out of this mess? How many services, how many resources? We have a budget of $700 million for DOC, we have a budget of $800 million for DCF. What fundamentally needs to shift for us to get out of some of the messes that we've gotten ourselves into?
Tim?
You don't have to jump at his question.
You know, I was, and I'm probably, I'm probably really, really wrong, but I think that the overall demographics of America has shifted who's young, who's going to be young in the future. I think the fact that we're seeing now, this overemphasis on making education work in inner cities, is because the population that is coming up is a different population that has been there. And I guess my hypothesis would be that as we realize that we're going to have, be more reliant as a society on populations of people of color who are now the, the sort of underclasses, that we will be investing in the front end a little bit more, and that over time, things will change. And so the backend investment probably is not going to work and be as effective, but what I see happening is the front-end investment and the demanding that more people in inner cities become more successful and more able to negotiate the technological world that we all live in. That's just a hypothesis.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who want, yes, sir, Professor Black, and then is that Pat?
I'll take a shot at two, that's, I mean, that's a million-dollar question, I think. And, you know, it's a difficult question, it's a difficult one to answer. I think, though, that we have, I mean, the problem is, is that we're living in a period of what I call social insecurity. People are afraid. There's a lot of fear, there's a lot of insecurity across the social strata. It's not just in distressed communities, but everywhere. Particularly with the current recession, we don't know how this is all going to play out. People are afraid, and when people are afraid, they become much more conservative and much less willing to change. So that's the problem, I think, that you're confronting. There are three strategies, I think, that would work. Two of them have already been mentioned. One is we can't, we can't afford to continue doing what we're doing. As a consequence, there's an opening right now to try to move into and try to create reform, simply because we can't afford it. So organizing has to take place around that issue. You know, we treat, we treat substance abuse among the poor as a criminal justice issue rather than a public health issue. It's cheaper to treat it as a public health issue, let's treat it as a public health issue and get those people out of prison, get them into the communities where they belong. Prisons are filled up with people who have mental health problems, who shouldn't be treated there, that. So there's lots of things we can do to begin to move reform in that direction. Secondly, the other thing that's already been mentioned is, you know, the focus on children. So of course, it's what the forum is about. One of the ways in which advocates for welfare reform have been successful historically is start to focus on the parents, right, who have already become demonized by larger, by larger society, right, but to focus on the children because of the innocence of children. So again, that angle is very important, I think that's why you're all here, you know, to figure out strategies and how to organize around that, that's number two. Number three is you're never going to, I don't think we're ever going to be successful by trying to appeal to the conscience of the white middle class, right? And I know that, you know, we can try to humanize those who have become demonized, which is what I try to do in my book, but that's a very, that's a difficult task to do. People are invested. We live separately. We don't have to interact with one another. We, we, there's so much territorial stigmatization of people who live in certain areas, and of course, it's all driven by racism, and we know that. So how do we deal with, with the big issue like racism? You know, and so the third strategy, I think, is that we have to quit thinking we're going to appeal to the white middle class, and we have to organize in our own communities and deal with these issues in those urban communities, because this, these, these issues also split and fracture urban communities. And if urban communities can get organized and consolidated around some of these issues, they can begin to push a policy agenda that will be heard. But that requires those urban areas overcoming some of their own fragmentations around, around some of these issues.
Thank you very much, Ann. Ann would like to respond to that. Ann, go ahead here.
I want to share sort of what I'm seeing nationally, and you're right, you know, we can't program ourselves out of this mess alone. But nationally, I really am starting to see shifts and differences that I think are important to note. One of them is just a shift in, in public awareness of the issue. And I think it's because we've been focusing on the children. But I said this on the radio the other day, that I travel in airplanes every week somewhere, and I've been doing it for 30 years, focused on this population. And back early on, I would say what I do, and people would say, oh, and start reading their paper again. Then a little bit later along, I got, oh, and they would start reading their paper again. Or they might say something like, yeah, boy, that's a problem, I'm glad I don't live there. Then later on, you know, decade later or so, I got, oh, yeah, I think I heard something about a church in my community that's doing something. And then a decade later or so, I got, yeah, I'm involved in some program. And now, yesterday on the train, I got, yeah, my daughter's best friend's father's incarcerated. I'm starting to get more personal knowledge and personal reaction, so that's number one. Number two, a shift that I've seen, is that I've been doing this 30 years, and I get invited to a lot of places as the director of the Resource Center for the last three. I have to say, this invitation is one of the first times that I've seen a diverse and equitable distribution of people of color in the, on the panel, in the presenters. Typically, white, middle-class Americans are the ones that are talking about this issue separately from the people that it's about, and they're not coming together. And so when I get invited and I say something like, you mean, everybody's white on the panel? And the only person of color is the kid that it's about? Sorry, I won't do it. And now, I'm not having to fight that fight so much. I'm finding out that, that, that people are talking to each other, the people that it's about are included from the bottom up and from the top down. So that, I think, is a shift that's going to create some, some changes. Public awareness and, and communication and conversation, and, and diversity, and, and honest and fair and equal conversations amongst people to address the racism and to address the issues of, of race. And I think those two things, along with programming, will help.
Thank you. Our last question over here. Aren't you the lucky one? Last question.
Thank you. When, when you, I forget your name from Families in Crisis. Susan. Susan. When you said that, that when people get incarcerated who are fathers, it can be an opportunity to reconnect them with their children, it did strike me as paradoxical, left me confused for a moment. But I noticed that a fear also rose up in me, and that's why I had to come up here and say something. And, but it's partially impromptu because I'm organizing, I just felt like I had to say something. I don't want incarceration ever to- I don't want incarceration ever to be used, or even if someone took you out of context, I wouldn't want them to use incarceration as an excuse to, I wouldn't want them to use incarceration as an, to say, we can do something good by locking someone up, it'll force them to have to have a conversation with their kid because they won't have any other choice. And I think that's the biggest fear that came up in me. And one thing that I'm definitely taking away from this conference today, because I already have, I just want to like plug this guy, Philip Zimbardo, who's done a lot of research on incarceration and prisons. And he talks a lot about incarceration trauma and the trauma that people who've been imprisoned experience. I'm taking away the amount of trauma that the children and everyone else experiences that I sort of knew about, but just didn't think about as often. And so to turn this into a question, is how can we make, how can we, when we, having the fact that we have prisons, just so, how can we reduce the trauma that that has on the prisoners, on the children, their families? How can we reduce trauma and prevent it? Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, and I appreciate the point that you were making. I feel sometimes when I say that, I recall something that President Obama often talks about in terms of crisis, because it's, you know, the Chinese symbol for crisis is challenge or opportunity, and what we know is when we have a crisis, you can't stay there. Things happen, either things get worse or things get better. And when I think about incarceration that we have in this state, it's sort of in that frame, trying to take something that's not a good thing, but seeing what is it that we can take out of it that might be that opportunity? And so that's how I kind of was thinking about family preservation. And so, you know, I'm glad that you did make that point, because I think we can't ever lose sight of the fact that, you know, incarceration really does separate our families and put our children's mothers and fathers behind bars. One thing I did want to add on this is that, you know, most, as we all know, most people who go to prison go home. And really, for most of them, their reentry program is their family. And it's that family that provides all those initial basic needs, emotional support, job leads, and kind of going back to what Representative Dyson talked about this morning when he was on the panel, is that for many of our caregivers, for many of the families that we've left behind, although we spend a lot of time focusing on offenders and offenders in prison, there's really nothing in place, you know, for those families and those caregivers that are left behind. And one of the things that I've learned is they do time, too. And we really need to keep that as part of this conversation and almost handle that as a parallel process. We expect so much of, we ask so much of the families that are left behind in terms of helping those offenders come home, but what do we do to try to provide support and to, you know, meet very real needs? And so I just would want to be a voice for that as well, that we can't forget, you know, that really, it is entire families that are impacted by this, and not just the offender that's in prison.
Thank you, thank you very much. And that was our last question, and I'd like to leave with the comment, my experience that I mentioned this morning about my two sons going away to prison, and it was only after Ann made her presentation today that I recognized I went through trauma about 10 times, and I didn't know it. It was the arrest, it was the trial, it was the conviction, it was the sentence, it was the prison he was going to, it was where was it? And it's all of those things. And if the person you have matters to you, you go through that trauma each time. And what compounded my situation is that I had no one to talk to. Nobody. So I just sucked it up. And I think, I think to some degree, I feel the pain today, you know, from that, you know? But it is not something that I knew because no one ever told me, and because they never told me, I just assumed that what was going on was, you know, that's it. And yes, it was, it can eat away at you like you wouldn't believe. So I just thought I needed to leave that with you, to have you fully understand that that panel today, man, there was a bunch of pain that went through that panel today over there, you know, and it goes on every day, over and over, families across this state and across this country, you know, and what it creates in people, man, it's got to be mind-blowing. I see it, not in my son and what happened to him coming out, but I see it in my grandkids. You know, so it just trickles down. It trickles down because they were absent him, you know, and he doesn't know how to deal with them once he's back, you know, so they've lost all that. They'll never get it anyplace. And their stuff is going to be monumental in terms of relationships. They have a difficult time with relationships. Grandkids, God, so my pain, their pain, his pain, whew, mind-blowing. But it's there, and we need to do something about it. Thank you.
I want to thank Bill, and I want to thank all the panelists and the folks that came up from the audience with the questions. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that this issue wouldn't be allowed to happen most likely at Central, and wouldn't be probably brought to the State for so quickly and with as much passion if it weren't for Representative Walker and Senator Harp, who have been passionate about this issue for a while. But, you know, I just, it speaks to it because the legislative session is starting in two days, and CTN was supposed to be here covering, but they told me that they are now having committee meetings before session, and so I know they have a busy schedule, as well as Judge Quinn and Patton. I just really appreciate their, their, taking the time to come out here and share their thoughts with us. All right, well, that's the end of the day. But before everybody leaves, I would just like to reiterate, we do not like to have these things just be a place and time. We are committed to this issue. Please check our website, and we'll also get back in touch with you with regard to roundtables and information, and please reach out to us as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.